To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks for everybody coming, welcome. And our first item on our agenda tonight is public comments. So we have public comments. Not hearing any, we'll move on. We have a nuisance update with Mr. Tarr. And Chief Morrison maybe?
Thank you Mayor. As alluded to last meeting, the asbestos RFPs have actually been out. We've got some contractors coming in this week for 121 First Avenue Northeast and 202 Third Avenue Northeast, where they're going to come in and go through the properties, give us some bids here in the next couple of weeks. And then we will, once we get that completed, those projects completed, then we'll be able to move forward with the demolition. Grass and weeds continue to be growing. We have finally received some applications for part-time seasonal, and we have some interviews this week. That's going to lead me to last dress off staff. I won in court last week with the 920 Fourth Avenue Southeast property. But it's, it has been maintained, but I believe there'll be some fines that'll go along with that for those folks. And other than that, I think I'll just entertain any questions or concerns you guys got for me.
Any nuisance questions, comments for Doug? Not hearing any, thanks sir.
Our end of things, we wrote five nuisance citations that were written and served, so we're pending court on those ones. And then we have three municipals written that we're still trying to get served, so we're in the process of those. Trying to get as many of the cleanups in October, September before winter gets, so we're hoping to have all eight of these done by then, pending how quickly we can get through the court process, but that's all I've got tonight.
All right. Any questions? Not seeing any, thank you sir. Okay, Mr. Heeling.
Already?
You're up.
Yep.
No sense, no time like the present, we'll just get her going and...
Mr. Davies, you ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Lovely assistants, assistant here.
If you want to advance it, that'd be fine. Can I hold that? Thanks. Just two seconds. There we go. One second please. We'll see the space bar. Yeah, just hit the space bar.
Right.
Hey, well, I'm Steve Heeling.
Step over to the thing so we can hear you, if everybody can hear you, fine.
I'm Steve Heeling, you can probably remember me from the great pickup ball net proposal from last year. Jeff Winters got me introduced to disc golf last year, and we've been playing quite a bit this year, and we've been playing a lot here. We go to a lot of courses, at last count, we've been to over two dozen courses around the state of Iowa and Minnesota. And the more we looked at ours, the more we realized, we really felt like there was a need for some updating. The Rotary Club put that disc golf course in 20 years ago. And at that time, it probably looked pretty nice, but it's a, it's a much, much different area out there. So we'd kind of like to show you what's going on right now, and then Jeff will tell you what we're proposing, what kind of changes we're proposing. That's just the plaque that the Rotary did, and you can see the date on it. And the first hole, okay. So go ahead and go to the next one. The biggest problem with our course, you can see the, that's the layout of the course right now. Where you see the stars, that's where you have to go over the creek. And the biggest problem right now is the weeds are so tall, they're taller than I am. And if you're a beginner, it's almost impossible. You're going to lose a disc, you're either going to go in the water, or you're going to put it in the weeds, and you're going to be looking for a disc for a very long time. And at 20 bucks a piece, that gets a little bit expensive. So it's just not very friendly, and we'll show you what these look like when you're actually there, go ahead. That's hole number two, if you can see the basket there in the middle, that's what you have to try to throw through. We had that all cleared out last year, it's already grown back, it's... And if, by the way, if you're halfway there, you're in the water. Go to the next one. That's hole five. And Jim, can you kind of see the basket clear in the back there, if you could kind of point to it? Yeah, and it's almost impossible to get a disc through there. Jeff and I have thrown many shots and hit a branch, you're in the water. And the way it was this year, that disc is gone. The next one would be hole six, and it's way back there, and a tree just got planted in that opening as well. So again, blocking your way to the hole. And then the worst one of all, hole eight. That's the view from the tee box, it's back over there. By the way, today I was out there, you can't see the basket anymore.
That's basket one you're looking at there, so...
Oh yeah, basket we're looking at is actually to the right of that tree, clear back there, I don't know if you can even see it. But again, a tree just got planted right in the way, that's not a huge deal, but those weeds are about a foot taller now than they were then. And again, a long throw over water and over weeds, it's just not very friendly. So that's also, that's what you're trying to throw over on number eight. And go ahead and go one more, that's what it looks like from the basket looking back at the tee. And again, those are probably a foot taller now than they were when I, when I took that picture. So one of the things we'd like to do is to take that out of play. We really would like to get the holes rearranged, we'd like to make the course longer for more experienced players, but much easier in terms of not having to cross water, not having to go into weeds for people that are just starting off. So go ahead and hit the next one. That is the one way you can get across from the first hole to what's now the second hole. And when the water's up, that is impassable, and the only way you can get across is the bridge. So we're kind of trying to take that out of play a little bit too. Just go ahead and double click that. Jeff's going to explain then real quick what we're, what we're proposing. By the way, I lost a disc the other day, and it took me a half hour to find it. Actually, I came back the next day and found it yesterday, so...
Good news is you found it.
That's right. Yep. So the weaknesses of the course as it is right now, those over the weed and over the water shots. Like Steve said, the weeds are taller than we are, and are thick. And they just burnt that out this, this, this spring too, and it's already... I've, I've been playing for four years, and I've never seen anything like this, with all the rain we've had, the weeds have just multiplied, but... Too short. I get in a lot of tournaments, and I realize from getting into tournaments that we have a really short course. It's like, if you compare it to a golf, a ball golf course, it'd be like a par three course, where all the holes, you can get it onto the green and hit it in two, so we want to make that a little bit tougher as well. Soccer, when that's going on right now, you can't play a couple of holes, three and four. That's the other thing we want, when people come from out of town, we want them to be able to play the course and not be disappointed. They came all the way here, they come, they see, they, they see the course, and they can't even play a couple of the holes, so. We want to try to take that out as well. I actually had a guy from Sheffield recommend, ask me if, he knew I got into disc golf and wanted to know where a good place to play was, and I couldn't recommend this course because I knew he had kids. And if you lose it in the water, if you don't have a retriever, if you do find it, you can't get it, or you'd, you know, hopefully find a stick, so... So here's kind of what we're, what we're trying to propose here. We're not, we're just asking to move things around a little bit. See hole one, we would use that eight basket that's right in front of the creek to make a longer hole, be 300 versus 225. So that would make it a legitimate par three versus just a, you know, like a birdie hole. Yeah, currently the basket's right here, it's a very short hole. We would just use a... Just make it longer. There. Yep. And then two, and we would, we would use the same tee box and go around, and we would plant a basket there. We would move hole one basket to that. That way you don't have to go over water, and for experienced players, it's a longer 300-plus hole. So we're making it easier for the beginner, that can throw it out there and get a couple of throws there, and then we're also making it better, more challenging for more experienced players. And then hole three, we would be using current six that would go over the water, and we're going, and we're going to put a new basket on the other side of the path there. Kind of have some trees to go around, little challenging hole, but there again, and we're not asking the city for money. We've already asked Rotary for approval to make these changes, and they're good with it, and they'll even help fund it, so we're not asking for money either. Basically, just letting you know what we want to do, why we want to do it, and, and that, you know, so forth. So then four, we would need to plant a tee box there, and that would be the one time you would go over water, but it's right in front of you, so it's not that big of a risk for a new player, a young player, and they got a big hole to hit there. And so we would, the thrill of going over water still would be there once, but you wouldn't have to do it four times and be real concerned about a lot of, a lot of trouble you can get into, so... And then hole four, we would also want to move the basket a little bit longer to make it a little bit more challenging from that tee box, right in front of the water. Then hole five would be the other tee box we would want to add, that would go, and we would move our six basket around through, in between some trees, so it'd be a little bit of a challenge to get through there, but yet, a nice little shot, challenging shot with trees. Most courses you go to have a lot of trees, so we wanted to use the trees as much as possible, yet not, not have the water in place, so... And then six, we would just basically use the current seven tee box and go to basket two. And then hole seven will be our current, our current hole three. But the basket is right under the tree, so Steve and I, since this, have decided that maybe moving the basket about 10 feet to the right, so it's not right under the tree, because that makes it a little bit tough when you throw a good shot, and you've still got the tree right there hanging over the basket, so... Then you would walk over to eight, and then that tee box, we would make it kind of a double tee box, go into five and eight, so that way you don't have one tee box to have to plant, or basically put in there. And then we'll go to the current basket eight, or seven, I mean. So we wouldn't be moving anything other than just adding the tee box. And then nine is the one time you would walk over the, where those rocks are, or go around to the bridge, and then play the current nine as it is. It's kind of a nice little challenging hole with all the trees. So that's kind of what we're basically asking, we just want approval to be able to make those changes. Add two tee boxes, move about four baskets, we're not needing any more baskets. We'd just like to make it more competitive for the, and challenging for experienced golfers, and we want to make it so the beginners don't have to worry about throwing into weeds. I mean, you still can, but you don't have to. And so that's kind of what we're trying to propose. We would need some new signs and posts, I guess, that's the thing I missed. We talked to Getting Signs about that. Yep, Getting Signs has already, gave us some estimates. We would put some markers on the baskets that would point to the next tee box, which is pretty easy at this course. We made it pretty, pretty easy to move around through the course. We have seen some very, very nice courses that are, that are new courses that have been remodeled or updated, and they have actually brooms hanging on the, on the, on the tee box posts, so that when you're mowing over it, or you, you know, you can just sweep off the tee box before you make a tee shot. We would let the Chronicle know, kind of promote it. And I think it's, it would be a good promotion for the city to be able to, to provide a, a course that they would look forward to coming to and playing, because we've played enough courses. There's an app called UDisc that most disc golfers use, and we'll go to courses or we'll not go to courses based on what UDisc is telling us. And right now, some of the complaints about our course on UDisc would be, well, I went there and there's soccer going on, I couldn't, couldn't even play some of the holes. Or the, the grass, and I lost it in the weeds, or I couldn't get across because the water was over the rocks, we had to go all the way around the bridge to go all the way over to hole two. So we just want to make it more inviting, and we want a course that people will want to come back to after they, after they come here. Hampton Hardware has nice discs for disc golf, so that would help promote them, and I think they maybe can help us promote it as well. We would put it on the website, and Steve's already updated the website as the course is now, for correct distances, and it's all mapped out, so you can know where, if you're out of town, or you can just find your way around the course, very easy. I could even organize tournaments is what, what my plan would be right now, if we got a course that we know that we don't have soccer to have to, to deal with, and maybe raise some money for the, for the course as well, that's what some courses do. Total cost is about, we, the main cost is the cement pads, we're going to put in two new tee pads. But we think we can get that done fairly cheap. And we talked to Rotary, got permission to do this, and Rotary pretty much said they'd be willing to pay for the changes. And Jeff and I will supply as much labor as we can, and if we can get a little help from some of the Rotary members and... Hey, we probably need a little help from some of the city just to, maybe with the cement pads and stuff, yeah.
Number three, my concern is throwing across that trail. What are the odds you're going to hit someone on a bike or walking?
With that, you can tell when somebody's coming. It's not the bike trail, by the way, it's the drive, it's the driveway. And you already throw over it now.
He's talking about new three.
Oh, new three.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, that one, yeah, again, we've, we've played it a lot of times, we just pretend there's a basket there. And it's really, if you see somebody coming, you just don't throw.
Yeah, just wait till they go by, we've done that.
You'll four?
No, you just don't throw.
You just don't throw. Yeah. It's, it's never been real busy.
Yeah.
But when we do see somebody, we wait. Yeah, it's just like real golf, you see somebody there, you just don't go. Good point.
Sure.
When we get the new website designed, as far as the layout and whatever, can we interface in with our city website? So under Parks or whatever, we can put this in and...
Oh, and put a link to it? I would think so, sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah. And I can put together a map of the finished one too, just a, a graphic, and you can just link right to that too.
Great, appreciate it.
When, when do you want to make all these changes?
We would love to move the baskets as soon as possible, because that's, that doesn't really disrupt much of anything in the park at all. Just get the old ones dug up, bag of cement, and whatever it takes to put them in the new spot. We could actually start playing it before the cement tee pads were in, I mean, you can tee off on grass until that point. Cement would be the big thing, and I'd love to get it this fall, but, you know, if we can get the baskets moved, we'd, we'd be well on our way.
Thanks for updating this, you know...
We want it to be positive for the city too, we want to be able to, people want to come here. And we go to courses, and it'd be the nicest course around if we did this. Because if we've been to Al Falls, they have two courses, we've been to Allison, we've been to Thornton, and yeah. We'd have a nice course that people would want to come back to, because we'll go to courses, and once is enough.
And 20 years ago, this was cool.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, 20 years ago, this is probably...
Things happen, you know.
Right. But the trees have grown a lot since then.
Trees grown, and soccer came up, and yeah, so...
Yep, yep.
It's time for an update.
Yep.
So it's basically, it is city park, so we, we need permission, but...
Right.
Do we move this to a, an agenda item on Thursday then, or more discussion?
I would say if everybody's in agreement. The only thing that I'd mention as well, is kind of like, kind of like the walking path, you know, if, if there's soccer going on, and you're playing frisbee golf, you know, this, you got to watch for people. I don't think, I didn't, put all the layout, I'd have to look at it a little bit better, but...
You have that now, with the playground.
Yeah, yeah.
You already have to look out, yeah.
That sounds like this would be better.
Yeah, yes. Just eliminate a lot of it.
Yeah. Yep. So, yeah, if, if everybody's okay with that, let's move that to our, to an action item, and we can go ahead and get it, get it moving.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. You did a good job of setting it up and telling us what we needed. Yeah. Move that. All right, well, thank you guys for coming in, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll move forward with that.
I just had one comment.
Go ahead.
I, I think we, I would like to request the Tree Board keep us posted on where they're planting trees, because this is another example, in addition to Memorial Park where trees went in, and maybe there should have been another set of eyes to look at the plan. I mean, I appreciate everything the Tree Board did, but there were what, at least two trees planted smack dab in the middle of a fairway.
Probably have another conversation with them as well, you know, just to...
They come to pick up their check.
We're all on...
Right, uh-huh.
We're all on the same page anyway, anyways. All right. I'll move on. Matt Johnson. Got some information for us on the vicious dog definition changes, so...
Ladies and gentlemen, council members, you know, first of all, yeah, I don't like being back here, but here I am. I know, I've talked to several of you since the incident has happened. I guess, you know, I know you guys, you guys are revamping the ordinances and that. I guess my main thing is that when you guys were reading off the criterias as to what deems a dog vicious, what I was surprised I didn't hear was the owner taking responsibility, which was, wasn't vaccinated, and it wasn't, wasn't registered within the city. That should have been, that should have been, that should have been a factor. When there's gray areas, there shouldn't be no gray areas. Gosh. I'm sorry I wasn't prepared for this, I just got back from vacation, but all I'm saying is that, I mean, I know there was a council, I know there was a few council members that, they understood it right away. You had a irresponsible dog owner, wasn't licensed, and I mean, I mean, doesn't that, you know, shouldn't that account for something as deeming the dog vicious, as, as the responsibility of the owner? You know? I think it does. It really should, you know? You know, as far as everybody wondering why, why do dogs hate mail, mail carriers? You know what? I've seen it with my own eyes, you know? I'll talk with an individual, their dog is barking right behind them, they take the mail that I just handed to them, and they hit the dog with it. You wonder why dogs hate mail carriers? I'm giving them the material to scold their dogs. You know, I mean, I know that, you know, but that's just one instance, it's, I don't have to do nothing, I'm just there with mail. I'm giving them the material to scold their dog, you know? So another thing I'd like to address is that, you know, I, a police officer is not the determining factor whether I deliver mail to your house or not if you have a dog. Your neighbor is not the determining factor whether I deliver your mail. Your neighbor could say your dog is nice, police officers can say your dog is nice. My first three seconds interaction with your dog is going to determine whether I deliver your mail or not. I know there's a, a few people out in the community that need to hear that. So I guess, I guess when it comes down to it, the state of Iowa has a zero tolerance policy when it comes to dog bites, which is if you are performing, if you are in the performance of your duty, which is delivering packages like Amazon, FedEx, there's a zero tolerance. I'm not doing anything unlawful, I'm doing my job, you know? And Iowa has a zero tolerance for that, I think, I think you guys should really look at that as one of the determining factors whether you deem a dog vicious or not. Take a zero tolerance, you know? Another thing I'd like to address is that, I don't like name dropping in that, but the chief of police here in town, I've talked with him, and I've, I've, I've addressed a few dog issues. And when they deal with it, I'd just like to know that, like if a dog is running at large, if they go address it, are they checking to make sure that it's registered with the city? And it's vaccinated? Well, if it's registered with the city, it's already vac, it's probably vaccinated, you know? But, I mean, I hate to say it, but, you know, you guys make the rules on, on what goes on, and I hate to say it, whether it put more responsibility on the police officers here in town? I'm sorry that it does, but honestly, if, I'm not saying if they're all driving around, they see a dog in your front yard, that they can just pull over and demand to see, you know, registration for it, but I'm saying, if they were called to an incident with a dog, they should be able to have the right to say, I want to know if that dog's registered. And if, and if it's not registered, there should be a fine, have a zero tolerance. You guys are looking at ways to get people to register their dogs more, zero tolerance.
There is a fine. There is a fine.
Yeah, yep, well, I, I, but I don't know, I mean, I wanted to talk to the chief about that, but, I mean, I know, I know of two houses that I've, that I've had incidents with, you know? I, I don't ask any more questions than that besides just reporting it, you know? It's not my job to investigate after that. But yeah, I, you, if, if you guys want, if you guys want more people in this town to register their dogs, I'm sorry to say, but it's got to be a zero tolerance. You know, which is, you know, like I said, if, if somebody gets a phone call saying this dog is being a nuisance and that, they should have the right to say, I want to know if it's registered. And if, and if, and if they're not registered, give them like four times the amount of registration. You know, that's the penalty. But honestly, I, I was really disappointed to hear some, to hear some news, because here you had an irresponsible dog owner, no registered, not even vaccinated, and you guys were probably looking at letting it come back into town. That's not kind of the dog owners I think any of you want in town. You know, we want responsible dog owners. I know Mike, Mike was talking about saying maybe, maybe there should be a distance between the, the chain to the mailbox. Well, honestly, I don't think that that's, that should be a postal policy. Is that a city, should that be a city policy? I, I don't know. I've asked, I've asked questions about it, nobody seems to know where that lies. But, I mean, it's just, I know, I know, I know, I'm only one, one individual speaking about this now, you know? And I know with, with this group, you guys, you guys can come up with something, but when you guys do come up with that, it's got to be a zero tolerance. Because like one, one of your council members said, we need to step it up. Honestly, I, I believe that, that individual. Oh, I know, I know there's, the night of the, night I was, the night I was up here talking about it, I was, I was trying to stay focused on that, that current situation, but now I, I'm glad that you guys are finally hearing me out about other situations, but yeah, just to let everybody know. A police officer is not going to tell me whether that dog's good or bad. I'm going to, I'm going to determine that, and that's how you're going to get your mail, but I... Yeah, that's, that's about all I can say is that, yeah, you guys, you guys got to take a zero, a zero tolerance, just like the state of Iowa. And so I'm not going to take up any more of your time, but, you know, I, just, let you know, I was disappointed that there was a couple, well... To let an irresponsible dog owner think about keeping it in town, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm Judy Johnson, I'm Matt's mom. We have a dog, and after Matt got bit, he came to our house, and we talked about this situation. And he says, Mom, do you realize that when you let Skipper out, because we have an attached garage, and he's got a chain right there by the kitchen door, and we chained him up, and he goes out the garage door? Well, we had our mailbox on the door that came into our garage. And he says, you know, he says, that's just too close for the mailbox to be where Skipper is out. So what we did, Matt moved our mailbox to the front door of the house. So there's at least a good fifteen feet that Skipper doesn't even get next to the mailbox. I think that the city needs to look at telling people, if you have your mailbox, your dog cannot come within ten to fifteen feet from that box. That way, these carriers, the delivery people, are gonna be safe. Not only that, but the city has workers that go out, and if they have to come up and them dogs are out, what protects your city workers from being attacked by a dog? So that's what my opinion is on it. But, yes, I agree, Skipper's licensed, he's got his shots and everything, and we keep up on those. And if your dog is not licensed, even though he's got vaccination, there's always that chance that that dog at some point is gonna get out of your house without you knowing about it. And there you, there you go, because you don't know where that dog is gonna go. Um, Skipper's in the yard with us, only when we're outside, unless he's on his chain to go out and do what he needs to do, and then he comes right back in. And we know people that say, my dog doesn't need a city license, because we, he only goes out and he comes right back in. Sometime or other, that dog is gonna take off and run. You can't count on it, you know, that he won't, so. But I really think that Matt had a, a good idea, that if an officer is called to a home that is on a, a report of a dog disturbance of some type, they should be able to ask, is your dog licensed with the city? And find out, if it's not, give them a fine, because that's the only way that they're gonna go ahead and make sure they do license that dog with the city.
Right.
So, and that's all I've got to really say about it, okay? But I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Creepy, did you have something to say?
As, as far as the police officers going to a home after a complaint, I did ask, ask Mark about that, and he says it happens most often, but there are times that it may not, and hopefully we, we step up and make sure that that does happen every single time. And I'm sorry to say, it's, and I told you this, this has been good, horrible for you, but good for us, because we did want to bring back this dog ordinance, and this is giving us the fuel and the fire and the desire to get that done again. And as far as the Iowa's zero tolerance, I would like to research that further. It is, I believe, my understanding is, we can make our ordinance tougher than the Iowa state laws, but we can't make them weaker, correct?
That's what I understand.
So I, I really wanna look into that and, and see what we can find out about that. Thank you for bringing that to us.
Anybody else have input at this point? If not, just, just to, to let you guys know that, that we have had some discussions about this, and it, it is, you know, forefront on most of our minds, so it's not something that's going away really quick. Um, and we will definitely take a look at everything, and, and we do appreciate your, your comments and your, your input, so. All right?
It costs a lot of money to send letters out to these people, or?
We've looked at, we've looked at that too, you know, we've looked, we've really, we've, we've searched, we've looked at some of that stuff too as well. We're just not to a point where we're, you know, we're gonna keep looking at it, is what I'm saying right now.
I do know of, of, of one dog that is not fed, not watered.
Okay.
Goes to the sidewalk, and then the other six, they run.
Right, right.
And they, sure, they're probably good bits, but I did see one chase a girl, but it didn't do it, it just burped.
Yeah, and there's a lot of stuff in, 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 in our city that, you know, we, we, number one, we're not everybody, everywhere at the same time, you know, so, so with the, the input that we get from people is good, um, and we are definitely taking a look at it, so I appreciate you guys coming in tonight and, uh, and sharing your thoughts with us. All right? Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item, it is the discussion of the pill, bill, building permit process requirements. Mr. Doug, did you ask?
Yeah, Doug.
Doug, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll basically just reiterate where we were, where we talked about last time. I know you wanna put this on here, so I can maybe answer some questions for you, but in the twenty years I've been here, we have not required a building permit for roofing, just to re-rough windows, siding.
Can you move the microphone, Doug?
We haven't required building permits for that. What, what we focused on, um, has always been structural. Anything related, like for remodeling and we're doing things that are structural, those get a building permit. That's the most important part, obviously. The state took over the electrical, state was gonna take over the plumbing, never did. When we're doing new construction, absolutely, hundred percent, we're, we're building permits all the way for that. But on the remodel, remodeling side of things, we really don't get involved too much unless it's, uh, like I said, structural, so. We can do things different, it's entirely up to you guys what your thoughts are and all of that down the road, but that's what we've been doing.
Well, I, I read over the statement again, um, that was presented last time, and it seems to me that, okay, so we have a state code for the roofing material, is that, or you?
No, we, we have our own code. We have the International Residential Code.
But we, we've adopted.
Yes, we've adopted, yeah.
So, wouldn't that be up to the original contractor of that roof to make sure he was adhering to state code? Because we don't do the inspections on the roof, so shouldn't that resp- that contractor be responsible for that?
So, right, so where you ran into the rub here a little bit, has been when our houses were built in nineteen fifties, nineteen forties, nineteen thirties, what was the code back then, right? We have our current code, don't get me wrong, so new construction abides by our current codes. But because we don't issue those building permits, but yeah, it should fall on the contractor to know what they're doing, but then it should also fall on, like this insurance deal, you know? It's been all across the board on these insurance companies. Uh, some pay, some don't pay. All, I mean, I guess I know what I would do if I were in those shoes, but, you know, unfortunately. The city doesn't want to be the scapegoat, and the insurance companies want us to be a scapegoat, uh, to where they don't have to pay, and then the contractors want the city to be a scapegoat, because the city told us we had to do this, we're gonna bill you this much. There's a lot of different ways of looking at it, so by not having that building code, the city's kinda stayed out of that for a lot of years.
I think it's just a loophole for that insurance company not to pay.
Right.
You know, if you got a, a national code and a state code, that should supersede Hampton's code. And they're, they're using that loophole, say, a few bucks.
Trying to use us, make us out to be scapegoats.
Mayor? Are you, I don't know where, quite where we're going with this discussion, are you proposing that we do building permits for roofs and siding?
Absolutely not, I, I mean, personally, no, but I'm gonna do whatever you guys wanna do, but I'm not gonna personally do that. We, we can't get people to remodel and, and fix roofs and windows and siding and things of that nature now.
Right.
We start putting permits and start getting a little bit more involved with that, it's gonna deter even, even worse than it. It's already a struggle for people to afford this stuff.
No, we can't get people to put house numbers in their house.
True story.
Why is there a permit for sidewalks when the sidewalk is already there?
You're asking the wrong person.
There's no fee for that, right?
Uh, I believe there is. I think there's, there's a twenty dollar fee maybe to replace city si- city sidewalk. Not for their private stuff off the city sidewalk, but a city sidewalk. And I think that, I'm gonna guess, it's been that way ever since I've been here again. The, uh, I'm gonna guess it's ADA compliance, probably to assure that it's as close as it can be. Unfortunately, not every sidewalk in our community is gonna be able to be that way.
It's also, it also offers an opportunity for, when they come in for that permit, for Doug to determine whether it needs an ADA ramp if it's at a corner or not. If, if it isn't, you know, it's all good and just proceed, but.
Whether or not the city participates, which we do participate in those, to, to encourage folks to replace sidewalk.
I think about, I think a lot of this, the, this insurance piece of it is, is where the big, big problem is. Um, because if somebody loses their roof to hail, to whatever, whatever wind blows it off, or whatever, you can replace it, and then, and then we're, our expectation would probably be to bring it up to our current code. And the insurance company says, well, that's not what they had, we're gonna give them this nineteen, nineteen hundred code, you know, and not pay for it. So I think that's a bigger conversation to be, to be had with the insurance companies.
If it, if it would have been a tornado instead of a hailstorm, and more than fifty percent of a house is destroyed, just like it is with the fires, if more than fifty percent is destroyed, then it needs to meet current zoning, because there's, there's houses that are in areas that can't be rebuilt in our community, uh, due to zoning. They're, um, and that'll fall into an insurance problem again. But the insurance companies, yeah, they've, they've picked and choose a little bit as far as how they wanted to proceed with some things. I've heard some great things from some of them, and I've heard some horror stories, unfortunately. But the contractors will tell you, a lot of the materials that they're utilizing won't warranty, they can't keep the warranty on those materials that they use if it's not.
Right.
Redecked, right, on, on those cases. So, to me, that's between the insurance company, the property owner, and their contractor. You guys fight it out, decide.
Yeah, I guess to me, I, I'm confused, 'cause I had a, an insurance company that looked at my roof and said, you don't get that roof fixed, we're gonna take away your house insurance. So I went out, I got a new insurance company, I fired the other one, and I got the roof fixed.
Yeah.
And so then we had the hailstorm, and so of course, um, when I had the roof fixed, replaced to satisfy an insurance company, they did all the decking and they were up there and they looked, and they had some holes in the roof, and they did it all, took off a chimney and they did it all. So when I had the house after the hailstorm, the same company came and reshingled it, and, uh, it didn't seem like I had any problem with any insurance. Was that because of the same contractor, or mine was a nineteen forty-three house?
I don't have, I don't have a answer for that, because I think they're all different. That's the, that's a problem, you know? Every single one of them are a little bit different.
Yeah. I'd never pay another premium to that company if they did that to me.
And I noticed adjusters are different. You might have the same company and you might have a different adjuster, and you're gonna get a different opinion.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've got our code and, and we want people to update if they need to, and in, in a situation like this, that's, that goes down to the contractor, the insurance company, and the homeowner, and.
That's right. Work it out.
Technically, technically, there's really nothing wrong with our code.
No, I don't think so.
It's working fine, so.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need, uh, any more court battles.
Right, so. Any other input?
Hey, then, I could just say when I had my roof replaced.
Yeah, we're, I mean, let's just have him, let's talk, we're, we're gonna talk with Doug right now, okay? So, all right. So I think we're, we're good, wherever we need, we need to be with this.
I think we wanna stay consistent, I think.
I think we're okay. All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing on the upper, uh, agenda is discuss patrol car purchase options.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, the twenty percent of the local office sales tax collected goes into a fund that's, uh, restricted to use for the police department, for patrol cars, equipping them, and also for facilities. So that's how we purchased the last patrol car, so we let that fund build up till it gets to a point where we have enough funds to purchase another patrol car and have it upfitted. At the last budget, I wasn't confident that we would have funds, uh, in fiscal year twenty-six, which we just started, in July, to purchase a car in this fiscal year. We have about, today I checked, we have about sixty-nine thousand, or, yeah, sixty-nine thousand dollars, um, in that fund. And, uh, in, in looking at the current price of patrol cars, uh, for instance, the, the hybrid Ford that we had bought last time, the black one, it's roughly fifty thousand dollars, depending on the options, you know, could be slightly less, could be slightly more. Up, upfitting the car, uh, at minimum fifteen thousand, so we would say fifteen to twenty thousand at the most, I hope. So, uh, we think we're getting to the point where we could comfortably look at purchasing a car in this fiscal year. We didn't budget for it, but we would amend the budget, make it as part of the amendment of the budget and, and have a patrol car. 'Cause we, you know, we don't, we don't feel it's, it makes any sense to just sit on money that is, you know, being collected to purchase patrol cars, and we need, we need to keep the rotation as new as possible, to limit them, the miles. That was the whole objective. So, I just wanted to say that we think we would like to look towards purchasing a car. We'll get more solid numbers on what car, what options, and then what upfitting final cost will be, but I wanted to get the okay from you guys. Uh, if you have any problems with that, you know, we'd like to know right now, so. Any concerns, questions?
I don't hear anything. I think, the only thing I, you know, and it's, is we don't, we don't wanna wait until next, next budget season, you know, when we're gonna, and then we're gonna have to order the car and wait five, six, seven months to get the car. So I think it just makes sense to get it going.
This, this waiting game hamstrings us, this, this really hamstrings us.
There may be, there may be one in stock somewhere that's brand new, maybe a twenty-five, the twenty-sixes are coming out, so, and they're ordering them. There might be a twenty-five on a lot that we could, you know, look at and get sooner, uh, if not, then we would look at ordering one, so. Okay?
All right. Sounds like we're good there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That brings us to the end, so I will adjourn this workshop today. Thank you, everybody.